This late time, I'd like to call the order, the April 26, 2017 meeting of the Coventry Planning Commission. First item, emergency evacuation. There are two doors behind you folks. The one to my right leads directly out into the hallway where you can make a right or left to get outside. The one to my left leads directly outside. There are also two doors behind us, both of which lead into the working area in the back where there is a door adjacent to the manager's conference room where you can leave. First item this evening, if everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Before we do our approval of the minutes, I know there's a lot of people here in the audience and we've had some cancellations that aren't, a couple of petitions that will not be heard here this evening. Okay, we'll go down on the list. Under old business, there was a pre-application site walk to be scheduled for WED Coventry 7. That is not going to be heard here this evening. It was just scheduling a site walk. There will be no scheduling of that site walk. It's my understanding through solicitors that they'll be coming back in May to schedule that site walk?
That's correct. They're looking to schedule it in June, but they'll be here in May.
Okay. And the next one, which I'm sure there's quite a few people here in the audience that want to hear about this one, was the public informational for the Crompton Meadows. We have a huge agenda here this evening. There's a lot of stuff on the agenda, as you can tell from the packed room. Our solicitor spoke with the folks from Crompton Meadows this afternoon and we've agreed to hold a special meeting for them of the planning commission. They will be the only thing on the agenda and we're going to have that meeting coming up in May. I'm going to schedule that meeting date right now. I was leaning towards, hold on, let me just get the dates scheduled. I was leaning towards, is it the 10th?
10th is a Wednesday, yes.
Right. So it would be our regular scheduled meeting for that month, I believe, is the 24th.
24th.
So it's either going to be the 10th or the 17th. Mr. Colonial, you expressed to me you could not make the 10th.
That's correct. I will not make the 10th.
Is there anybody else that cannot make the 10th? You can't sit on that petition anyway. Irrelevant. Is the 17th good for everybody? So we'll be having two meetings, two weeks in a row. All right. All right, so we're going to be postponing the public hearing, public informational meeting for Crompton Meadows till May 17 at 7:00 PM at the Coventry Town Hall. I do know, I see attorney Andy Tietz, he's here representing East Greenwich this evening. He wanted to just be heard briefly on this petition. Mr. Tietz?
I think I can answer.
That's a good question.
I think you should.
Okay, yes, thank you.
For the record, my name is Andrew Tietz, T as in Thomas.
Is that on? Mr. Tietz, could you?
There we go.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Tietz. For the record, that's Andrew Tietz, T as in Thomas, E.I.T.Z. I'm an attorney with offices at 2 William Street in Providence, Rhode Island, and I'm here representing as special counsel the town of East Greenwich, Rhode Island. As you know, this borders on East Greenwich, it actually more than borders on it. Part of this development is in East Greenwich. A parcel of land shown as Assessors Platte 13, Lot 25, a 1.1 acre parcel in East Greenwich, is between this property and Crompton Road. There's no access to the property without crossing that. And the town of East Greenwich does assert its jurisdiction over that pursuant to statutory law and also the case law of the City of Providence versus First National Stores. That property is only legally usable as a single-family residence. If they want to use it as access for over 150 residences, they're going to need either a use variance or a comprehensive permit from the town of East Greenwich as well. So consequently, we have reached out to the applicant. I've contacted Mr. Mancini and made him aware of that. And I also, if they are willing to accede to that, I'm making the offer that the town of East Greenwich would be willing to do a combined hearing. So instead of having to have two separate meetings, you have one meeting with both planning boards present that vote separately, ask their questions separately, but only one meeting to try to make it more economical efficient. If the applicant doesn't choose to go that way, then we'll be here as other objectors will be at your May 17 meeting. Unless there's any questions, that's all I wanted to get on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to make sure people in the audience knew there's going to be no hearing on Crompton Meadows here this evening. So anyway, our next item, we have approval of minutes from our February 22nd, March 15th, and March 22nd meetings. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Discussion.
Yes. The March 15th meeting's...
Could you try to make points?
On the March 15th meeting, where it says, Raymond Matson said if we focus more on our fiscal 2017, it should be, we should focus more on, because he would go with a five-year plan and the same one, it's just a small part.
Okay. Is that it?
That was it.
Very good.
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend is a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next thing I would like to do is with the approval of the board, I'm going to take this, I'm going to be moving things around here this evening. The stuff that we need to get taken care of, and there's 11 things on the agenda this night, so I'm just going to move a couple of things around. I'd like to keep, the first four, the Rose Platte would be number one, Peruzik and Alexander number two, Telia number three, Betancourt number four. Those will stay. I'd like to take the recommendation to the council for the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, which is last. I'd like to just move that up to number five so we can get that out of the way. Then I'd like to go through under the old business. I'd like to go Camp Westwood, make it six, Matson Road be seven. Those are just going to be quick discussions about the site walks. And then we'll get into the new business. I'd like to put Baba Street number eight, Justin and Jenna Platte number nine, and then we'll go with Rivers Edge Condominium, which will be the first public hearing, and then we'll go with the Lewis Farm Road project for last this evening on the agenda, because that is going to take the longest. So I'd like to make those changes. Would somebody please?
Motion to amend.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. First item this evening, we have a pre-application site walk for the Rose Platte, Henry Rose Jr. and Claire Rose, a proposed three-lot minor of 106 Camp Westwood Road. Is there anybody here representing the applicant this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin, 1070 Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the applicant, Henry and Claire Rose.
Very good.
They have to schedule a site walk. The proposal is to turn 10, 10 and change acres of land into three lots of approximately three acres apiece. There's been two proposals presented, one to build a short public street of approximately 50 feet long and have a lot in the back, and the other to have three street frontage lots. The street frontage lots would require a waiver with regard to the frontage, as the middle lot of the three would only have 168 feet of frontage where 225 feet are required in the zone. There's a single-family house currently on the property and a grandfather trailer. The proposal would be to keep the house and remove the trailer. It would obviously be a house built on the property in its place. So we're going to schedule a site walk at the Camp Westwood Road address and have the commission take a look at the property.
Very good. Mr. Flynn?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have this Saturday, April 29, 9:00 AM, with a rain day of May 6, which is a Saturday at 9:00 AM.
Does that work for you, Mr. Cronin?
I believe it does.
Wait a minute, I don't think it does.
May 6?
Mr. Flynn, could we have May 6?
Yes.
Thank you.
We want to do May 13 for a rain day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, next three items on the agenda, our recommendations to the zoning board for Article 16 of the zoning ordinance. This time, I'd like to have attorney Dave D'Agostino just explain to the board what our role is here regarding these three development plan review tasks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I think the planning commission is aware, under Article 16, a development plan review process is required for all projects that require a variance, a special use permit. Those, as you know, are granted by the zoning board of review, but it requires an advisory opinion coming from this board. So in working with the planner and discussions with the chairman as to the best way to facilitate that, we don't, the law requires that you do more than just a mere procedural formality. There's actually a case on point in that regard. So the aspect of your review is, the way we've worked this out is the planner, Mr. Sarcioni, will submit, as he usually does with your reviews, submit a proposed set of findings of fact. If you so agree, then we will prepare a written advisory opinion to the zoning board of review. The actual process of special use permit or variance will be heard by the zoning board of review in a full public hearing. I'm happy to take any questions.
Ms. Faye?
I have a question, of course.
I would be shocked if you didn't.
How are we supposed to give a determination if we haven't been out to see the sites? It's not fair to the client, it's not fair to the public, it's not fair to the board at all.
Sure. The, my response to that is your obligation as the planning commission is to determine whether the project as presented will constitute, and I'm reading from section 1651 of the ordinance, will constitute a suitable development and whether or not it is in compliance with the criteria set forth in the ordinance. Based on the development plan review submissions and based on the administrative review of these items, it's, a site walk is not required, because again, your role is advisory, so you certainly have the right to inquire as to specific details of the proposal, but you're advising the zoning board of review, so it's a little bit, I hesitate to use this word, but I think it's appropriate to address your question. It's like doing a development plan review light.
Well, in the past, we have gone up to look at different sites on development plan review, so I don't understand why we're not allowed to, especially the one with York Park. It's saying it's in an RR2. It's off Washington Street, it's in a built-up area. So how is that an RR2? It should be an R20.
It is a 20.
Well, it's written up as an RR2. That was one of my first questions.
It does say RR2, you're right.
It's McIlveale Avenue, isn't that just down the street from?
It's one over from Alborough off Washington.
Right.
From the southern side of Washington.
Over near where the old Sneaker Rod used to be?
Yeah.
Okay, well, there are houses down there, so how do we know if we don't do a site walk, if the neighbors aren't going to stop complaining? How can we give an advisory opinion in that essence?
Have they already approved a canine facility for that site?
Yes, this particular, that particular application already received approval. What has changed, what has changed, I don't mean to interrupt, what has changed is there's an ownership change. So because of that, it, they need to get another approval from the zoning board of review.
So then why did they just do it the way they did it before, without our approval?
Can I, I'm the owner.
Not yet, ma'am.
There was no ownership change?
I know there wasn't, I know, I understand. It's an additional use on the same property.
Right.
The, the, Cindy, your question? I'm sorry.
The question was...
Why when they did it last time, when they went before the zoning board, did that not come before us?
Okay. Frankly, I don't think that the planning commission was doing these advisory reviews at that time.
These were done.
Yeah.
These are the first three.
Correct, correct. The way the ordinance is written requires anything that goes before the zoning board of review to come here. So this is in essence, a new run at an existing procedure.
Then I think it needs to be readjusted so that we can give an accurate opinion or recommendation?
And that's certainly, that's certainly within your...
I think that should be added to the ordinance.
That's certainly within your purview and, you know, as the commission is aware, there's an interplay between the role of the planning commission, the role of the council. Certainly, if you feel hamstrung by these requirements, you could propose an amendment to this ordinance to be taken up by the council. But the problem, the issue that we have is a couple of sort of practical issues. One of the practical issues is that these are scheduled for the zoning board of review, which meets next week.
Next week.
So in, if you feel that a site walk is absolutely necessary, my recommendation would be, and probably best done ahead of the planning commission meeting, you can go out as an individual and view the property. And if that will help inform you in addition to the information coming from the administrative office as well as the material contained in the packet, then that's something you certainly can do. But the practical...
That doesn't help for this one, because we've got to give a decision tonight.
You have to make a decision tonight, yes, and that will be submitted to the zoning board.
It could help in the future if we don't get it added to the ordinance that we should be doing, the site walk prior to.
I understand the frustration, and again, this is a bit of a learning curve for all of us, because this is the first time that we've done this process, but we're trying to, we're trying to do the process, meet the, make it a meaningful process, but at the same time, not bog down both this commission and the applicants with a full, a full vetting of a development plan review, when your role in this regard is advisory. So I wish I had a better answer for you.
That could end up with more non-conforming uses as well, and it's not our purview to make non-conforming uses or expand on that. And some of these, I think...
Then we just give a negative, then we don't give a positive recommendation to the zoning?
If you, if you cannot, based on, based on the material that's presented to you, if you cannot find the wherewithal to make a positive recommendation, you can advise the zoning board to disapprove. And they're free to take up the recommendation, follow it or not follow it, frankly. And I, and I think, I think in terms of non-conforming uses, and I know the concern with that, but I think the zoning board, which is where the full hearing and vetting is going to be taking place, they're probably maybe better suited to make that determination as to conforming, non-conforming use. Just a comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Agostino. Okay, next item, number two, development plan review, Peruzik and Alexander, Karen Peruzik. Is there anybody here this evening representing the applicant? Please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please, your name is?
I'm Michelle Alexandra. I am actually the owner of the property. We are doing dog training.
Is that microphone on? It is, okay. Could you speak in new, please, so the people can...
We are doing dog training right now at the facility, but I have been training with her. I still have a full-time job, so she would be, she's a full-time dog trainer, so she would be just coming in during the day to use it, and I only use it during the evening.
Okay, so somebody who has an existing business in South Kingston is going to be moving here and doing this from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM? And that's, that's you?
That's me.
That's you, okay.
I've been in business in South Kingston for nine years. We've been in the same location with the same landlord for nine years. We've had no problems with our neighbors, we're in full compliance with the state, we're a registered licensed business with five part-time employees.
Okay. Now, it said, your, when you got approvals last time for your business, it said your business was going to be open from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So they are going to be open at the same time?
There may be like an hour of overlap, but I only do like one dog at a time.
Okay.
Okay? So I work at the prison until like 3:30 in the afternoon, then when I come home, then I see clients. Okay? So she...
I would only be there on weekdays during...
I would only be there on weekdays during the day. And as to your concerns about neighbors, the property is on over 11 acres, and it has a lot of brush and trees and scrub all around it. The nearest home, I am actually quite friendly with the person who lives there, Gail, is across on the other side of the bike path. Okay? And she, and she loves it, she actually wants to come and work for me. And then it's just an auto body shop, really, that's even, even closed, again, and that's on the other side. I did take pictures today of the indoor of the facility, just in case you guys, because when I came before, you did want to do a site walk, but we hadn't even started construction on the barn yet. We are almost done, if you want, I can pass around pictures, if that helps.
Sure.
Still in five. The first one is just the front entrance. It's all up to code. We're working with the fire inspector, we have a fire company that is overseeing all of the fire extinguishers and everything like that, so we're trying to do everything overly safe.
So basically, you went, you were here before the zoning board a few years ago to open up your business?
Yes.
Okay. And you received the approvals, and you've had no problems since then?
No, none.
And now you want to expand the use for, for business, and you're, you're just going back before the zoning board again to ask for the special use permit again?
Right.
Okay.
Because we were told we needed to.
The special use permit's not tied to the land, it's tied to the person, so because I'm a separate person and it's a separate business, would it be the same activity?
Right. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Colonial?
Just, so are you expanding any of the buildings or apartment areas? Basically, the footprint of everything is the same, it's just additional business, additional employees.
Right. I'm not there during the day, it's just...
No problem. I just wanted to make it clear, because again, doing a development plan review and not trying to step on the toes of the zoning board, which I think does a very good job of what they do.
Right.
I don't want to get into the...
But I just want to say, they're not here for a development plan review. They're here for a recommendation to the zoning board for a special use permit approval. The avenue by which they get here is Article 16, the development plan review ordinance.
Okay.
So they're not here for development plan review, okay. I just wanted to make sure you understood that. Any other, have any additional questions for these young ladies? Yes, after the time.
I have a question, as far as maintaining control of the dogs and all that. Are you working just inside the barn, inside and outside, leashes, any fencing?
Inside, outside, leashes and fencing. Check, check, check.
So the risk fencing already installed there?
We, when we get the, if we get the okay, we have to get ahead of ourselves, then we're going to put the fencing in outside. But right now, if I do training outside, it's all on leash.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have any more questions for us? At this time, I will entertain a motion from the board.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Flynn?
Favorable recommendation to the zoning board, dog training facility, AP 55, Lot 169, Zone RR2, 26 McIlveale Street. The proposed project is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The project meets the objectives stated in Section C1 of the land use element. The project will not have any, have any significant negative impact to the environment. The property is already developed and no new buildings or structures are proposed. The proposed, the proposed project meets the dimensional standards of the zoning ordinance. The buildings on the property to be used for the proposed facility already exist and will not be expanded in any way as to create shutdown performance. The proposed project will not have a detrimental impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The subject property has physical access to the street. The subject property has adequate off-street parking. The applicant will need to receive a special use permit from the zoning board for the proposed facility.
Did a motion made, second? Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good luck. Next item this evening, we have another development plan review, Roland and Christine Telia, for Lyons Drive. Is there anybody here representing the applicant this evening?
I am.
Come on down. Good evening.
Good evening.
That's okay, that's okay. It says painless, we'll walk you right through this. Okay, so basically, you have an existing single-family home on Lyons Drive that does have an in-law apartment. It looks like you went before the zoning board, and I'm assuming you're trying to sell the house now, and you have a problem selling the house as an approved in-law apartment?
Correct.
Okay.
Our contractor at the time, we assumed that he had applied for the permit and he had not, so...
But I was reading a report, it said all the tenants with the town that you were granted, they all knew that it was an in-law apartment.
Correct.
Right, right.
In order to neaten it up, she's going back before Bobby Cronin, the zoning board, for a special use permit for, have you been using it since 2008 as an in-law apartment?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I've owned it for months with us.
And the tax assessor knew that there was an in-law apartment there? You were taxed as such?
Yes, we were.
Okay. But they're selling it, and I guess they're having, they want to just make sure their I's are dotted and their T's are crossed.
So you want to sell it as an in-lived apartment?
In-law, yes.
Okay.
Is there a separate meter for the utilities? Is there two, two electric meters?
No.
Or do you get one bill?
Just one bill, yes. But she has her separate heating and, you know, electric and all that is separate.
Does she have a separate exterior door? She have to come through your house to get in?
Nope, she has two exterior doors and there's also connection to our house also.
Good. All right. Anybody have any questions?
Ross?
Cindy?
I do have a question.
Sure.
If they're selling it with, as with an in-law apartment, don't they have to have a separate meter for it, unless it's a family member?
It is a family member, that's, that's what an in-law apartment is.
But they're selling it, so who's to say whoever buys it, they may not have an in-law that needs that apartment, they could rent it out as another.
Then they'd be in violation of the zoning, then they'd be bringing in a border. There's a difference between an in-law apartment and bringing in, renting out a room in your house.
Because I know people who have done that.
You better report them to Matt.
It's very...
Don't let her out of the room.
Once the in-law dines or moves on... In order to meeten it up, she's going back before Bobby Crona, the zoning board, for a special use permit for... Have you been using it since 2008 as an in-law apartment?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I've got others with us.
And the tax assessor knew that there was an in-law apartment there? You were taxed as such?
Yes, we were.
Okay. But they're selling it and I guess they're having, they want to just make sure their I's are dotted and their T's are crossed.
So you want to sell it as an in-law apartment?
In-law, yes.
Okay.
Is there a separate meter for the utilities? Is there two, two electric meters?
No.
Or do you get one bill?
Just one bill, yes. But she has her separate heating and, you know, electric and all that is separate.
Does she have a separate exterior door? She have to come through your house to get in?
Nope, she has two exterior doors and there's also a connection to our house also.
Good. Anybody have any questions?
Ross?
Cindy?
I do have a question.
Sure.
If they're selling it with, as with an in-law apartment, don't they have to have a separate meter for it unless it's a family member?
It is a family member. That's, that's what an in-law apartment is.
But they're selling it. So who's to say whoever buys it, they may not have an, an in-law that needs that apartment. They could rent it out as another.
Then they'd be in violation of the zoning. Then they'd be bringing in a border. There's a difference between an in-law apartment and bringing in, renting out a room in your house.
Because I know people who have done that.
You better report them to Matt.
Once the in-law-
Don't let her out of the room.
Once the in-law dies or moves onto a nursing home, they're free to rent it out to somebody else.
I disagree because that's not the, that's not the approval they're getting. They get a special use permit for an in-law apartment.
I know, but nobody checks on it.
I will say that if there's an in-law-
That's not the sellers.
Most people that are going to buy a house with an in-law apartment tend to use it as an in-law apartment.
I would, I would point out for the panel that one of the requirements of an in-law apartment is that it's only accessible through the-
Through the house.
Through the house.
Not an exterior door. And this has two. So by case in point, it could be a rental.
I mean, you know what? Those are issues-
Is it a valid question?
It is a valid question based upon what Mr. Wagner said. But I would leave those issues up to the zoning board because I'm sure the zoning board, I believe they see these type of cases every single month. We've never, you know, people, they see them all the time.
We don't get them that often, I know.
I, we never get them. I don't ever recall ever seeing one before, an in-law apartment.
Yes, before you came on the board.
All right, well, that was 10 years ago.
Ancient history, okay?
So.
It has happened?
I, I will say that this property happens to be a few streets in back of my house and there, there is, really there's no problem. It's just an addition. An in-law apartment built on the side of the house. I mean, it fixed the neighborhood. Everybody's turned their garages into something.
Okay.
So it's really pretty well suited for this.
And to be clear, they got all of their necessary building permits. It was signed off as an in-law.
Way back when, right.
Building permits. But because there was never a decision granting a special use permit, that's why they're here.
That's fine, okay.
Okay. Any more questions? All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. News?
I'd like to make a favorable recommendation to the zoning for the Tellier, Roland and Christine Tellier, existing in-law apartment, AP 16 Lot 80, Zone R24, Lyons Drive. The proposed project is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The land use element of the plan encourages medium-density residential development in areas served in part by local utilities. The housing element encourages providing safe and sanitary housing choices while maintaining a balance between housing choices. The project will not have a significant negative impact to the environment. There are no wetlands on the property. The property is already developed and no new work is proposed. The proposed projects meet the dimensional standards of the zoning ordinance. The addition for the in-law apartment received an administrative variance in April of 2008. The in-law apartment already received the required building permits and can be accessed through the main dwelling. The proposed project will not have a detrimental impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The subject property has physical access to the street and already exists. The applicant will need to receive a special use permit from the zoning board for the in-law apartment.
Has been a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda this evening, we have one more development plan review. Joseph Bettencourt, Two Breezy Lake Drive. Is there anybody here representing the applicant this evening?
My name is Joseph Bettencourt.
So this one...
Is this an existing non-conforming, is that what it is?
Yes, it's, the mobile home doesn't conform to, I believe, rear or side setbacks. And it's a mobile home outside of Mobile Home Park, which means it's a non-conforming use.
So he's grandfathered in on the use and existing non-conforming, he doesn't, it looks like he doesn't meet, what, front setback in the side? But he meets the 40-foot in the rear?
Well, on this picture, the street actually goes all the way around the property except for what is the south, which is the top of this picture.
Yep.
So it doesn't meet the right side or the south side, but the addition is coming towards the street and doesn't create any additional setback issues.
Is the addition the 11 by 36?
It is.
It is, okay. So it's the bedroom and the extension of the living room?
The addition meets all the setback requirements. The home itself has been 55 years, so I can't do anything about previous where it was placed, but the addition would be, would meet all those setbacks.
Right, so it's, it's non-conforming, but it's, there's no more non-conformity being added by the addition?
Just, in a sense, because the use is expanding on the property regardless of setbacks. Right, that's the expansion.
So technically we are expanding an existing non-conforming use, which is something-
That we don't normally do.
Is allowed by a special use permit through the zoning board.
Right.
Yeah, zoning can do it, but we can't.
We would give the advisory opinion.
Okay, um, please. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bettencourt? Mr. Aston?
Okay, so the current structure has two bedrooms. All you're doing is shifting your bedroom over, expanding living room?
Yes, there is, there is a 14 by 10 shed that has a laundry room in it right now and a hot water heater. I would move that into the small bedroom, so it's all within the home. And then we're just replacing one of the interior bedrooms with the, into the addition, that's all. You know, we really, I, I also live in a neighborhood. I live just one house away. I've been there five years. I'm a building contractor. I've built many additions on mobile homes in this town, in the park. And I understand this is outside of the park. It is the second oldest house in this community. When you drive into the plat, it's the face of the neighborhood you look at. And we're putting the addition on the front, putting a gable roof on the front, making this look more like a, a home that blends in with the rest of the neighborhood. I don't see why any of my neighbors, and they'll get their chance next week, but I don't see why they would be opposed to something that's upgrading and adding value and looking like a home like their homes look like.
Thank you.
I like making improvements that's going to make it better, even though it's more, technically more non-conforming, I agree.
And you're on a septic over there, right?
Has an above-ground septic system that's eight years old.
It's an above-ground?
Yes.
That's a wetland.
Bottom was empty, yeah. Because you must have, you have a height, what is it?
Yeah, well, where the lake is, across the street, the lake is around the, the plat, yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
Ross?
Cindy?
By adding, you're adding enough, you're making the washroom bigger or adding a bedroom, or both?
What we're doing is taking the existing, it's two bedrooms currently. We're taking the small bedroom and taking the laundry room that's in the shed, in the hot water heater, and moving it into the home.
Okay.
And then the addition, we were going to extend the living room to make it larger and then put the bedroom that I just took over as a laundry room, we're going to move it into the addition. So it'll still just be two bedrooms, and that's what the septic is designed for. It just makes everything contained in the home.
If you, okay, I have a question.
Well, the, the septic is eight years old. How much, and it's an above-ground, how, how, what's the lifespan of an above-ground?
25 to 30.
They're not adding more bedrooms. Septic systems are based on the amount of bedrooms. So if they're keeping the two bedrooms and it was built for two bedrooms, then it's still in compliance.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'd like a favorable recommendation to the zoning board on the Bettencourt addition expansion for non-conforming use, AP 71 Lot 48, Zone R20, Two Breezy Lake Drive. The proposed project is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The housing element encourages revitalization of older housing stock in order to provide a wide variety of housing opportunities for all residents. The project will not have a significant negative impact to the environment. There are no weapons on the property. The property is already developed. The proposed project meets the dimensional standards of the zoning ordinance. The addition to the mobile home will not create any additional non-conformities in terms of dimensional requirements. The proposed project will not have a detrimental impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The subject property has physical access to a street already exists. The applicant will need to receive a special use permit from the zoning board for an expansion of a non-conforming use.
Motion made, I have a second, Mr. News. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
One, no.
Ms. Vega voted no.
And that's because it's a expanding and non-conforming use. And that is how I have always voted in prior reasons like this.
If nothing else said to you, you are consistent, I agree.
I am consistent in that area.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next item this evening, number five. We have a recommendation to the town council on a proposed zoning ordinance amendment. It's a new recommendation regarding amendment to Article 16, Development Plan Review, Section 1630. Matthew, could you give some rundown on this one?
So this proposed change would be to what is essentially the part of the area-
Microphone.
So the proposed change is to the section of ordinance that is bringing these special use permits and everything in front of you for an advisory opinion. What it would do is create, it, it would allow for simple variances for dimensions to not have to go through this process unless the zoning board votes to have, to receive an advisory opinion from the commission. So that's the, the main change. So special use permits, use variances would still have to come before the commission for an advisory opinion to the zoning board, but dimensional variances would not unless the zoning board decides to take it.
Let me ask you a question. I know you and I talked about this. So those three that we heard tonight, with this proposed amendment changes, they would still be required to come before this board?
Correct.
Did it not say that you as administrat-, you don't have the authority to approve it administratively and make the decision whether or not it has to come before us?
Correct. That only, the planning department only has the ability to waive the development plan review requirements for uses allowed by rate.
Okay, so if somebody is asking for a dimensional variance only, no special use permit, then it does not have to come before this board unless the zoning board wants an advisory opinion from us?
Correct.
So that's all this ordinance does? We're still going to hear every special use permit and every use variance?
Correct.
With a public hearing?
No public hearing.
No public hearing?
No public hearing.
On a special use permit?
Well, the, the special use permit is the zoning board's, they're going to have the public hearing. We're going to do just like we did here this evening. We're giving an advisory opinion on the special use permit. There's no public hearing.
All right, so that's only on development plans review that we do the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, that's what I, remember I explained earlier, they're not here for development plan review. They're here for an advisory opinion on a special use permit. But the, the way it was advertised, the avenue in which they get here was that development plan review ordinance, that 1630.
Didn't make sense.
It didn't make sense to me either, but-
I would still like to put an amendment to this to, to say that there should be sidewalks on these prior to us giving an opinion? I think you'd get more out of it when you see what you're approving or advising on.
Can I just say, traditionally as a rule of thumb, how many of the members, we're a nine-member commission, how many members traditionally go on sidewalks?
Probably three of us. In certain circumstances, four, maybe five.
Mr. Colonial, I, well, I can appreciate what Vega is saying about the sidewalks. But the ordinance, the amendment to the ordinance that we're making a recommendation to tonight is to eliminate them coming before us for dimensional variances.
Right.
There still could be, the sidewalk issue is kind of separate. That deals with the rest of the ones that are going to come before us. Or would it be appropriate? What I'm trying to do is just deal with the one issue that's before us tonight if we could. And, and I did have one follow-up question. And that was, based on the number of zoning applications that typically come in, how many of them are dimensional variances versus everything else? Is it a small percentage? Is it consist of a lot of them? Because my understanding from the town council meeting the other night was this was to take some of the burden off of the plate given that these meetings tend to get long enough without having every single thing come in. So I was just curious.
Yeah, it, it varies. You know, these are all on the agenda for next week's zoning board. They're all special use permits. There is a variance on the-
One dimensional variance on-
But you already received it as a subdivision to begin with, so.
My guess is it's less than 50%, maybe 25% of the time. So we're just going to be, we're still going to see 75% of things that come in.
I think this ordinance is a step in the right direction. I don't think it quite goes far enough. I, I think that there should be more stuff that the zoning board should have to recommend to come see up. There shouldn't be stuff just automatically sent to us. He followed up saying?
What else would you like to see?
I think, I think most of it, I think special use permits could be used on a case-by-case basis.
Well, they, they are now.
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I, I actually believe that some of these that we voted on tonight shouldn't, shouldn't have needed to come before us.
Oh, you're saying they shouldn't have needed to?
Unless, unless the zoning board saw fit to send them to us for a recommendation.
Now, I agree with you. I didn't agree with, I didn't understand what you were saying before.
My mistake.
I also agree with you. Or at best, whether, let, let the zoning board decide whether they want an opinion or let staff decide whether they should be sent to us.
Staff believes it needs to come before us, before zoning? I, I wouldn't be okay with that too. I don't, I agree.
Because how many of these do you think we're going to start seeing every month? Would you say three, I mean, two or three?
I think that'd be about average, yeah.
And are some of them going to be non-conforming uses that are going to be being expanded?
Or structures that are non-conforming, yes.
Then I think we need sidewalks on them, sorry.
Okay, let's get beyond that. What we're trying to say is-
You want to send a one-person body out there to do the sidewalk? I don't care, or two people, but I think one needs to be done.
Where I was going with this was, um, do you think everything that needs a special use permit needs to come before us or it could be left up to the zoning board to ask us for an advisory opinion?
I agree with that statement, yes.
You do agree with that?
Yes.
And so on a case-by-case basis, if they want to ask us, they could send us stuff?
Yes.
So is that the recommendation that we want to send back to the council?
Yes, yes.
Yes. But also-
But also with sidewalks?
A sidewalk.
I, I got that.
But it would be up to zoning.
Yes, they come here, then we need a sidewalk.
I, I, I think somewhere along the line, the planning board was actually given an inordinate amount of power if the rules are written the way they're written. I mean, everything is coming to us for zone changes and everything else. I mean, a lot of these things fall under the council's purview. I, I rely and trust the zoning board. I, I would, I would be in favor of this amendment with a further recommendation that the town council consider expanding upon it. And I, and I would put that in the form of a motion right now. I would just leave the sidewalks for now. That would be up to us to decide if they decide to start sending stuff here, whether or not we're going to adopt that policy against sidewalks.
And, and Ms. Vega, I, I would have no problem supporting your desire for sidewalks. I, I, you know.
But you don't want it in the, as an amendment to the ordinance?
Yeah, I, I just, I want to make sure that the staff knows that we want a sidewalk to give the applicant enough time to get before us so they're not coming before us, planning board this week, zoning next week. Oh, sidewalks. Oh, sorry, no time for a sidewalk.
Right.
If they know that upfront, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Chairman, my, my problem with that is, and having been before the zoning board for dimensional variance, you know, maybe that didn't come here, but just going to the zoning board for something. The process, everything they do is a hearing, they have to do the mailings and everything else, they took it like 90 days to get through the process depending on the meetings we're. We're gonna add another 30 to 45 days to some business that wants to come to town or do something or develop something, and we have a zoning board that's perfectly capable of making those decisions. I mean, that's just my thought.
Well, then you need to take it up with the council.
I tend to agree with that.
And tell them. Don't, then don't send it to us. Make up your mind, either it's coming or it's not. And how many of them are we gonna, are we gonna get? Nobody seems to know that. So why don't we just play it by ear for now and add a sidewalk if we need it? But make sure they've got enough time ahead of time?
That's the only issue, that's the only issue I really have with, with the sidewalks, and I, and I really don't wanna take up too much time on the sidewalks, because that's not what we're here to talk about right now, but.
Josh, use your, use your mic, please.
What the sidewalks do, it's not tripping some people. With the sidewalks, what, what they're gonna do is they're gonna delay a, a simple process for a, for an extra 30 days, so.
It may not go, Josh, it may not, if, if they.
But they have to come before us to schedule the sidewalk, and then, and then we need the time to go look at it, so if they come before us tonight to schedule the sidewalk, it'll be next month's meeting, so now a, a simple, something simple has now turned into an extra 30 days for the, for whoever it may be. Do you understand what I'm, what I'm saying? Is that, is that similar to what you were?
Yeah, and, and my thought was, again, I looked at some of these on Google, but we, we had the packet where the agenda's been out for four days. And I know I went by the Breezy Lake one because, only because it was right around the corner, but I could've driven by any one of these, I just stumbled forward, so that was kind of the position that I took on it. Because they're not changing anything major that's not already there, zoning, zoning kind of deals with things that are somewhat existing, or else they're coming before us anyway, in which case we would've done a sidewalk.
Mr. Johnson?
Would it be appropriate if there's someone in the ordinance from the zoning board, if they wanna give us some input on this issue? Would that be appropriate?
I, I don't think I need to hear any from anybody in the zoning board.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is it possible that some of these that we ruled on tonight had sidewalks in the past?
On what, on the planning issue?
Yes, on this planning sidewalk.
I don't think, I don't think, of those three we just voted on, I don't think any of them ever came before the planning commission before.
No, they didn't.
No. Well, no, they went to the zoning board. And I'm sure the zoning board did sidewalk, because I, I know a few members do. Okay, I didn't, I moved this forward.
Then to eliminate the sidewalk, then maybe we need to have a member of the zoning board attend one of our meetings and say, yes, we did a sidewalk, and this is what we found. If you don't wanna do sidewalks as of what year, then I think we need to have somebody from.
But here's the problem.
Attend our meeting.
Here's the problem, Ms. Fagan, you are not, by the time they hear this petition, we will have already met. You know what I'm saying? We're before them.
Before them.
So hypothetically, if one of the ones that you voted on tonight were to go for a sidewalk, that means they wouldn't get zoning until June, and then June comes, and the zoning board might wanna sidewalk.
They might not do their sidewalks to one day before the meeting, some of them could do them the morning before the meeting. Do you know what I'm saying? Therefore, they wouldn't have time to come report to us.
And also for your knowledge, there is, I wrote about it in my report, that each application also has a application fee attached to it, so, you know, it's time and money for the applicant.
That's not part of our purview.
We're always supposed to try to make it a little easier, though.
We're supposed to make it easier on businesses, but we're not supposed to look at.
Everybody, everybody, we shouldn't be making it easier on everybody.
Okay, we've, um, we've discussed this for a while now. We didn't, and I moved it forward thinking it would be quick. My mistake.
I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clonian?
I will make, uh, make a recommendation, favorable recommendation to the town council with some, with some additions or comments to the proposed amendment to Article 16 Development Plan Review, Section 1630. The proposed change is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The amendment continues to allow for proper review of growth and development in town to ensure compliance with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, while also easing the regulatory and financial burden on the applications for minor dimensional relief. The proposed amendment, consistent with the applicable underlying purposes of zoning per Article 1, Section 110 of the zoning ordinance. The amendment continues to allow for development plan review of various types of uses by the planning commission, which is important and necessary component of land use planning protecting public health, safety, and welfare. The amendment will create more efficient review process for dimensional variances in health expedited zoning approval process. The amendment will continue to provide a, an administrative procedure related to variances, special use permits and administrative variance. And additionally, I would also suggest that the, the town, the town council consider expanding the, the types of zoning applications that would have to come before this board to minimize the burden on us, with the understanding that they also appoint a competent zoning board, and I think they're best suited to address most of the issues.
I'm sorry, is there a second on that?
Second.
Second. You didn't mention anything about leaving it up to them to, did you? Them to make a decision whether or not it comes before us?
Well, that's in the proposed amendment, isn't it? Isn't it already in the ordinance?
Well, the proposed amendment strictly deals with dimensional variances, I thought you were expanding it to include special use permits and use variances. Maybe I missed, I don't wanna speak to you.
Well, here's the thing, my, my motion is to certainly in favorable, in favor of the proposed ordinance, and then I asked at the town council, because I believe they still have some readings and discussion on this at their level.
Right.
I added on to the end that perhaps they should consider expanding the purview of the ordinance to include those other things. I did, I added that at the end.
Okay.
I didn't cite which ones, I'm gonna leave that up to them.
Okay.
I mean, there may be some they want to come and some they don't, but I would prefer to see as little as possible come here, only the ones that are necessary, and we have a competent zoning board that's appointed by them, and I think some of those matters are best left to them to handle.
Okay. So we'll leave it as is. Then a motion sec, made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Okay, next item this evening, we have an old business pre-application Camp Westwood Plat, my tiny residence, 11 Westwood, Camp Westwood Road. Is there anybody here representing the applicant this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin, 1070 Main Street, Congress Square Road. It's the chairman we had after the commission's sidewalk on a small subdivision, minor subdivision, also on Camp Westwood Road. County is the place to be.
I know, huh?
It's a little over 68 lot, on the corner of 117 and Camp Westwood Road, there's an existing historical home on the property built in 1752. The intention is to keep that property along Camp Westwood Road and 117, and subdivide a lot along Camp Westwood Road. The, the applications to build a same-family home on that lot are proposed.
Did we have a sidewalk?
I believe we did.
Do you know how many members was?
Three.
Three, oh, okay, just.
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, I, I myself was absent from the sidewalk. So we're looking to gather the impressions of the commission and move forward.
Mr. Flynn, Ms. Fagan, or Mr. Matson, whoever wanna lead the discussion on the sidewalk?
I didn't have any issues at all, I think there's already an opening in the stone wall that Mr. Boyer said that they were gonna put the driveway through. I, I didn't see any issues at all, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?